Call the meeting to it, the record shows this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, November 20th. All members of council are present and the press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Council is going to remain standing for a moment of silence. You are welcome to join us. If you do join us, please remember John Tervay. He died yesterday. I knew that wasn't going to be easy. I asked Charlie to turn the heat down so my eyes wouldn't sweat. So far, so good. Um, I'm going to move down there.
You're going to cry January 2nd.
Item number 1A on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout Camden Miller. Whereas Camden has proven himself to be an outstanding member of Boy Scouts of America, and whereas it takes many years of education, dedication, and commitment to achieve the Eagle rank, and whereas Eagle Scouts act as leaders and role models in the community, and whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout his life and will be a beacon to others for their leadership quality and commitment to this young man has shown, and whereas citizens of Tegu-K appreciate his hard work in constructing the picnic benches at Lake Wiley Lutheran Church, which will provide more opportunities for fellowship and camaraderie. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K do hereby congratulate and recognize Camden Miller for his achievement towards the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community. Camden. Just as a side note, I get to sit on the Eagle Board of Review, which is the first Monday of the month. And I got to sit on Camden's Eagle Board of Review, and I've got to tell you, I was impressed. There are four or five guys there, sometimes ladies, and we're probably in our 50s. And here is Camden Miller at 18, looking us dead in the eye and answering every one of our questions and being as professional as he could be. And what I liked most was he got our jokes. Because someone asked him for the recipe, because he works over at Local Dish, they asked him for the rest, one of the recipes, and he said, "Sorry, can't tell you that." And he was, you know, without skipping a beat, he just went right into it. So I was very impressed with him. Thank you, Camden, appreciate it. Now we move on to item number 1B, which is the Citizens Academy graduates. We have some of the graduates who are honor graduates, and I understand if you attended all of the classes, you're considered an honor graduate. In my day, we'd have considered something else, but we'll leave it at that. First is Alan Benish. Alan is not here. So I'm assuming his, so he made, yeah, he was an honor graduate, he just couldn't make this. And I assume his wife Gloria is not here. Also an honor graduate is Kristen Dayton. James Dale. Chelsea Adele. No? Probably should have done this. Liz Duda? Bill Frazier. Not an honor graduate, but he's here. Rick Haynes. Honor graduate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Cheryl Nutziger. And I'm assuming her husband Jerry is not here either. See, you can do this as a husband and wife thing, it's pretty cool. Jenny Shelton. Which way do you want to go? Victor Siegel. So now we know what you do while your wife's working at the, exactly. I got a Christie Torrentino. There we go. Honor graduate. Tamara, there's always one. Vintage.
Tamara, that is Amelia.
There you go. Glad you had that one, not me. And, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I skipped a couple. Catherine Tulos. Ellen Wingate. There's always one. Thanks for coming out. For those of you who don't know, the Citizens Academy is a group gets together 12 weeks? Five weeks. Even better. And you learn about the city, you learn about what we do and how things happen and things like that, and I think it's pretty educational. And we've been successful so far with three or four Citizens Academies. Charlie? Four?
This would have been number four.
Number four. Perfect. All right, and now I'm going to ask Tim to come forward for item number 1C, which is the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas the city of Tegu-K celebrates 27 years as a Tree City USA, which has recognized the value of trees to the community and has adopted the act of celebrating the first Friday in December as Arbor Day, and whereas trees combine, ah, trees continue the aesthetics of the community and when properly cared for, increase property values and beauty in our neighborhoods, and whereas trees enhance the livability of our city through the filtering of stormwater and air pollution, whereas this is the purpose of this proclamation on this day throughout the state of South Carolina is to encourage planting of trees and follow the actions of J. Sterling Morton in 1872. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K do hereby proclaim Friday, May 1st, 2017 as Arbor Day in Tegu-K, South Carolina, and urge all residents to observe Arbor Day by attending the Arbor Day celebrations on Friday, December 1st, 2017. One at 9:00 a.m. for Sergeant Anthony White at the Tegu-K elementary school, and one at 1:00 p.m. for Jake Jacob at the Trailhead Park. And I will give this to you, Tim. Thank you. And item, item number two on the agenda is public comments. Wasn't in the budget. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to item number three on the agenda, which is an executive session. Council entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for legal advice as pertains to the Duke Energy lease for Catawba Park and also as it pertains to the game on PDD.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session. Council is back in open session while in executive session, no votes were taken other than a vote to exit executive session. And only items on the agenda were discussed. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of minutes, counsel before you are the minutes from the October 16th meeting. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number five is the planning commission update, and we have the lovely Kathy Masters coming to deliver that for us.
That's right.
No hair flip?
Oh. Okay, well, these are our, Chris Leonard's notes, I'm going to go over them briefly. The purpose of us bringing the notes to council is to approve the communication and ask council to help us with our strategic direction as we, as we, as we move forward with the planning commission. We had a workshop in October. Some of the things we talked about were updates related to the fence. There were some changes to the privacy fencing height types. There are some pictures, and I guess it's coming to you guys in December sometime to take a look at. There's been some further discussion on short-term rentals, vacation rental-type homes. We are going to discuss that further next month and maybe put together a survey for the citizens because it has a lot of conversation. Let's see, we have continued working on the trails and bike master plan. This is creating a master map for all existing and recommended trails. They are, staff is drafting language, and we're hoping to have something for public input early 2018, maybe a draft for council first quarter 2018. There is a December workshop planned to continue short-term rentals, to talk about potential changes to accessory dwellings, also known as in-law apartments, and some of the regulations surrounding that. It's on our list to discuss environmental responsibility and sustainability requirements for developers, maybe bringing in some, some green building practices to those who are coming into the city, to discuss some new starting points for PDD development, for PDD negotiations with developers, and to discuss our short-term and medium-term goals and action strategies related to the comp plan. If there are questions about those things or input from council, we'd certainly love to have it if you have thoughts on it. We've set aside into next year additional streamlining of current zoning code, small telecommunications cells. The municipal association has asked us to look at it, and we don't feel like it's a high priority, we'd put it off. Nuisance code consolidation, additional streaming, and revisiting sign regulations. Is there anything that we're working on currently that you have questions about, or are you, we're just kind of keeping you up to date on the front end so we won't surprise you when we get here?
Perfect.
Good?
Thank you so much, Camden. And that last list sounds like a whole lot of fun. Thanks, Kathy, appreciate it. Item number six on the agenda, under unfinished business, is the second reading to annex of 8.151 acres. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight before you is a second reading of an ordinance to annex plus or minus 8.151 acres identified as, and for the record, 644-0000043, and to rezone it from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, and to amend the game on PDD site plan. As council has already given a favorable first read to this ordinance, we would ask for a favorable second at this time. Yes, and I will turn it back over to y'all.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to annex plus or minus 8.151 acres identified as TMS 644-0000043, to rezone from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, and to amend the game on PDD site plan.
I have a motion by David O'Neil. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Council, I would like to, so that's four to one. Okay. I'd like to amend the agenda. Item number 7D, I'd like to move that up since the guy for Cameron Creek is here and we can let him go early if you guys don't mind. So my motion is, can we move item number 7D before 7A? And that's my motion.
Let's do it.
Okay. Perfect. I made the motion, Ryan seconded the motion. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 7D is the approval of a letter of credit of performance, labor, and material surety agreement for Cameron Creek Phase 8. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got to get to that part that you amended there. Give me one second here.
That's why paper works.
Got it. There we go. At the regular meeting on July 10th, 2017, the planning commission did approve the final plat for Cameron Creek Phase 8 contingent upon the approval of the letter of credit and performance labor and material surety agreement by council. That is in your packet tonight. The city engineer has submitted a letter approving the amount of the LOC, and your city attorney has reviewed and approved the performance labor and material surety agreement to accompany the LOC. And at this time, we would ask for council's favorable approval.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the letter of credit and performance labor and materials surety agreement for Cameron Creek Phase 8.
Motion by Jennifer Stalford. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hershey. Any council discussion? All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same like sign, you're approved. Item number 7A on the agenda is the approval of the lease with Duke Energy for the Carolinas for property for the Catawba Park. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight before you is a lease agreement with Duke Energy of the Carolinas for the city to lease approximately plus or minus 39 acres that does include the current river launch just below the Lake Wiley Dam. This property has been a conceptual part of the park, of Catawba Park, since 2007, when the idea of the park was first envisioned. Council, this is the next big step for Catawba Park. Last month, as y'all recall, you did approve the Clear Springs lease, which, working on coordinating schedules to get together to execute that, this is the next big one. We cannot execute it until the FERC has given the final approval, which should be forthcoming very soon. The current license period by FERC to Duke Energy, which would coincide with what our lease would be, expires in 2055. So for quite a number of years. So we're very excited to bring this forward for hopefully council's favorable approval.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Duke Energy concerning the property that will be used by the city as part of Catawba Park and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement upon Duke Energy's receipt of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's approval of the Catawba Watery Recreation Management Plan.
Motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stalford. Guys, this is huge. It's taken a long time to get here, but we are here. Yeah. Lot of hard work, lot of conversations, and I'm really proud that we're here at this point, and I'm glad that it's being set up so it can move forward properly. So I'm excited about it. With that being said, if there are any other council comments? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approved. Item number 7B, resolution authorizing the lease purchase of equipment. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This was discussed during our FY 1718 budget process. These items are necessary and were discussed moving forward. It is for a dump truck and a mini excavator and a vehicle lift for TCUD, a large excavator for our stormwater department, to be able to manage and maintain our new mulching site off of Gardendale Road. Once we're, we'll actually start using that property as soon as we're able to get that piece of equipment in. We'll be able to start utilizing it. And then three new patrol cars to phase out three aging patrol cars in our police department. The resolution before you is required by all of our lending institutions. First Citizens was the, presented the best terms, and the amount is not to exceed $434,575. And as I said, this will not be a fiscal impact to your current fiscal year.
Thank you, Charlie. Just for giggles, what's the interest rate?
2.01.
2.01, I believe.
Did I miss that?
You did.
Oh, getting old.
Yep.
And out of the four banks, they were all within probably one basis point of each other. I mean, very tight. We're really, really pleased with the biz we got in.
Counsel entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the lease purchase of equipment for TK Police Utilities and Stormwater Departments in the form of an equipment lease purchase agreement not to exceed $434,575.
I have a motion by David O'Neil. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item number 7C on the agenda is a resolution adopting the York County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. City manager Charlie Fundenberg. That sounds like so much fun.
Yeah, it is a lot of fun, let me tell you. And I do want to, council, before I really talk about what this is for the public, I do want to thank Tim Gillette, our operations director, as well as Chief Scott Samansky from our fire department, who attended meetings with York County EOC, providing a lot of input. This has been transpiring for about the last year and a half, two years, working on putting this together. It is necessary, following the FEMA guidelines, and it does, by us adopting it, does make us now eligible for FEMA funds, whether it be pre-disaster or post-disaster. As council will recall, we're actually, because of the, our prior involvement with this, we're able to get pre-disaster mitigation money for the backup generators, power generators on TCUD 2 lift stations, when that project's almost, should be wrapping up in the next month. So it is very, it's great reading material if you find yourself looking for something to cozy up by the fire with, I promise you. So, council, we'll turn it back over to you guys.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel entertain a motion. Anyone? Anyone? Motion to approve the resolution adopting the York County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Motion by me.
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion?
Is this on the website?
That's the plan.
Yeah, because, is this on the website?
If it's not, it will be in the morning.
It's very interesting reading material, and if you want to just see TK, I think you scroll down to page 106. So, but the preface portion is very informative to understanding the entire purpose of this. And then you could see all the other cities and what they're doing or planning. It's a lot of information.
Call the question. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same like sign, we're good. Item number 7D, we did. Now we're going to move on to item number eight, city managers report. Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be fairly brief. City offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday this week for Thanksgiving. We do want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. As you heard earlier in the meeting, Arbor Day, during the Arbor Day proclamation, Arbor Day is on Friday, December 1st. Probably the best time to come out would be for the 1 o'clock at Trailhead, where we'll be planting a magnolia for Jake Jacob. So looking forward to that and seeing everybody there. Going to be pretty busy between now and your December meeting, December 2nd is our annual tree lighting. This year, if you want to come up a little early, Shore Club is doing horse and carriage rods, starting at 5 o'clock, and then our normal festivities will begin at 6:00 at the pavilion. I would encourage you to be there early. Get a great seat. Fort Mill Course will be out entertaining, and don't want to miss the tree lighting, or I hear Santa's coming. So make sure you're there. Thursday, December 7th is our 12th annual, hard to believe we've been doing it for 12 years, holiday light tour with TCPD. Come to the hearth room, starting at 6:00. They've got shuttle buses taking you around to look at all the wonderful exterior illuminations that go up this time of year around town. It's fantastic. Saturday, December 16th, Santa's going to make one more final trip. This time, he's going to be riding up and down every street with TK Fire Department, as he does every year. Parents, be patient, he will come down your street before he goes back to the North Pole. If you go up to the firehouse, you'll miss him, because he's not going to be there. Last but not least, council, edge your seats, we're survey results from the demand response transit. Y'all have the full graphs and everything else, just for the viewing audience that's playing along at home. Thus far, we're not quite at a month yet that it's been up. We're going to leave it up through at least first part of December, but did want to get you guys an update. We've had 300 responses so far. I was very pleased with the number of respondents. 75% do not currently pay for private transportation. This is just a quick synopsis of, council, what y'all have. 69.67% pay less than $20 a month for transportation. 72% said they would not use DRT, demand response transit, if it was offered. 81% of those cite they already have a car. 58% say if it was offered, it should be privately funded. 35% did actually say to that same question that publicly funded with user fees. So, interesting there. 53% do not support the city funding it. If council will recall, during David Hooper's two presentations, I think on the low end, you were looking at about $10,000 for at least the first two years. Federal highways wouldn't kick in any funding until it had been operational for two years. So it would be $10,000 from us, $10,000 from town of Fort Mill if they elected to get involved, and $10,000 from York County if they elected to get involved. 47% support the city, do support the city in funding it. So 53 said no, 47 did say yes. This is what I thought was very interesting. We tried to find out just some demographics on folks that were taking the survey. Majority of them were married females between the ages of 35 and 65, they owned a car, and they worked. So not really the target audience for demand response, but they were the people that, they were the majority of the respondents. So we've published it and pushed it out several times, both on Facebook, as well as the last several rewinds that we do on the weekend. You can tell that the rewind's working, because Saturday's when we get the most jumps on respondents. So probably, I don't think it's in this coming rewind with the holidays, but we'll do it at least that first Saturday in December, and then close that out. And if council wants to discuss it further, at your December council meeting, we can. I'm not getting any push right now from RFATs as to, we need a response, need a response. It's not a, you know, cut bait or swim kind of thing yet, but I guess... but I guess at some point, counsel, whether it's this council or the new council, we'll need to make a decision to give them an answer one way or the other. So, that's what, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions for Charlie? Move on to council comments, excuse me, public comments, are there any public comments? Come on, one of the five of you got something to say. Closed public comments, we move on to council comments. Ryan, want to start us off?
Sure. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Heather and Alicia, and Dave, and to all the rest of the candidates who threw their hat in. You know, Fort Mill was kind of looking for candidates and wondering who was going to challenge, and how do we talk people into running? And in good old Tegucigalay, we had, what, seven? Run for council and two run for mayor. So, congratulations to all of you for throwing your hat in the arena and trying to make Tegucigalay continue being the great place that we live. Dottie, you're going to be missed, I'm sure, along with the, along with the other two of you guys. We're going to miss y'all, and thanks a lot for trying to make it.
We didn't leave yet.
We're not gone yet.
Close.
Forty-one days.
That's all I got, I don't have much.
Jen?
Thanks, Ryan.
I just want to say that beautification committee does have some workdays planned in December. And that if you're interested, go to their Facebook page, like it, follow it, and that's where I post all the workdays. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, safe holidays, trips.
Thanks, Jen. Dottie?
I think Ryan and Jen said it all, no comments.
David?
Thank you, everybody who came out to the Veterans Day ceremony. It's always good to see more people coming out every year. And I think that was our biggest ceremony we've ever had. So, appreciate you guys supporting the veterans that way. And I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, David. Couple things, RFATs on Friday was my last RFATs meeting that I attended. And we voted on, I think it's 13 projects that RFATs is going to study along the I-77 corridor. But one of those 13 projects is not a bridge. So, the bridge from Rock Hill over to Fort Mill, Tegucigalay area, has been squashed at this point. I voted against the funding, the idea of what they wanted to do, because they took, out of the 13 projects, they took the first, or they took the three in Rock Hill and decided to have a subcommittee together to study those, and then put it out for bid for more money to study the other 10 projects. I don't know why we couldn't have just waited for all of them at the same time, and why they took those three projects and decided to fund those for a study as opposed to waiting. But the RFATs community is very heavily sided to the Rock Hill side of things. As a matter of fact, one of the members of the RFATs policy committee had three proxy votes in his pocket. So, he pretty much controlled what was going to happen on the RFATs committee. But that's your problem now. So, that's where I stood on the RFAT side of things. Letters to Santa Claus. We do have the mailbox. Santa's elves brought the mailbox back to City Hall. And you can bring your letter to City Hall, and you will get a response. Those have to be back by, they have to be in by when?
Somebody said the 8th.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's December 8th.
The day John Lennon died. That's where it has to go in, is December 8th, you get them in by December 8th, and you will get a letter back from Santa Claus.
We'll have it on social media, and we'll have it in the rewind for certain this weekend.
That'll be awesome, that'll be awesome, so thank you. With that said, happy Thanksgiving. Travel safe, eat lots of turkey, take lots of naps, watch lots of football. Item number 11 on the agenda is an executive session. Counsel, entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion, we move into executive session to receive legal advice as it relates to the Stonecrest PDD.
I have a motion by Dottie Hersey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, sing a saying aye.
Aye.